Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so I'd like to call to order this business meeting of Urbana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marabu?
Here.
Member Jones? Member Langendorf here. Vice President Baxley?
Here.
President Palowski?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? No, here none. There will be an executive session tonight after the current meeting for the purpose of litigation against the district. There will be no action taken by the board after the executive session completes. It is now time for citizen statements. If anybody here present wishes to make a statement before the board, please fill out a goldenrod sheet in the back of the room, hand it to Recording Secretary Lori Johnson. We haven't received any yet. Going once, going twice. No citizen statements this evening. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as published?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We do have an action item tonight, which is the appointment of our student ambassadors. After we take a motion to approve Mia Schroder, Kandrea Towns, and an alternate for Sophia, sorry, Sheikah Fraley, to fill the role of student ambassador. Is there a motion for the floor?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Do we need to do a roll call for this? Yeah, let's just do a roll call vote, please.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Marabu?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for your service, guys. Now it's time to be sworn in. So there's a little form in front of you that, if I stand, and I'll read parts of it to you, and you just repeat after me. Yeah, that's the first thing you've got to learn is turning these mics on. There you go. Yeah, they've got to be about six inches from your face for people to hear you online. I say your name.
Aye, Kandrea Towns.
Aye, Mia Schroder.
Do solemnly swear.
Aye, Sophia.
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of student ambassador?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of student ambassador?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of student ambassador?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of student ambassador?
To the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
To the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
To the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
To the Board of Education of Urbana School District 116.
In accordance with the policies of the Board of Education.
In accordance with the policies of Board of Education.
In accordance with policies of the Board of Education.
In accordance with the policies of the Board of Education.
I further swear.
I further swear.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I shall encourage and respect.
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 The free expression of opinion by myself.
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 And board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
And board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
And board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
And board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving. Next up's the student ambassador report.
Okay. Okay. So this is our report for this meeting. So we gathered together to form our mission as your new ambassadors for this year, and some of the plans that we have started this year. Starting off with our mission statement. As your student ambassadors, our mission is to represent UHS with integrity, supporting student engagement in academic curriculum, and to advocate on the behalf of all students to create a positive and inclusive learning environment. Our role actively listens to the concerns and recommendations of fellow students and create solutions to enhance growth in academics. We are ensuring that each student has equal and easy access to resources around the building. We shoot to value leadership, positive interactions, and involvement to build a strong and more unified school environment.
These are introductions. I'm Mia Schroder. I'm a senior at Urbana High School. I love to read and hang out with my friends and play with my dog. I plan to major in criminal psychology in college. And within Urbana High School, I'm involved in basketball. Last year, I was the president of the peer tutoring program. I helped co-found Science Olympiad. I was also the president of Civic Engagement Club. I'm involved in Habitat for Humanity, and I co-founded Ladies in Lab coats. One of some of my goals as student ambassador are to increase the literacy rates in graduates and increase the diversity in AP or accelerated classes and to help effectively bring student concerns to the board. My name's Sophia, oh, sorry. Okay. My name's Sophia Sheikah Fraley. I'm a junior at Urbana High School. I'm on the volleyball team in the past years and this year as well. I'll be in Habitat for Humanity and last year at a key club. This year, I'm in National Honor Society, and I'm also part of Student Council. My goal as a student ambassador is to invest in Urbana Athletics and trying to get more students involved and having coaches get more, like, training on, like, coaching. And then I also want to try and get ACT class slash SAT prep courses before after school for students. And then overall, I just want, like, to advocate for as many students as possible.
I'm Kandrea Towns. I am involved in the Student Equity Council. I am in Student Council, Band Council, Marching Band, and Jazz Band. My goal this year as a student ambassador is to create an environment where every student feels safe, supported, and treated fairly. I want to let students know that their voices are heard, and I want to advocate improvements for them. Another big thing that I have is I want to make sure that all students have equal access to resources around the building to better help themselves and their education. Plans and motion. Okay, so some of the plans that we have made so far is we have a Google form that will be sent out this Friday to every student in the building. That is a student concerns or recommendations form. Students will fill out that form accordingly, in which it gives the student ambassadors points of application. And that gives us some things that we could work on. In the email, it has a list of questions that students, again, should fill out accordingly, and that will help us. And that'll be attached in an email that will be sent this Friday. On the next slide, this is some, this is just a slight sample preview of the form that was made. And keep in mind that this form is anonymous. We do understand that as ambassadors, some students may feel like they aren't able to speak up to adults or aren't able to speak up to staff in the building, and they are afraid that something may come back to them. And so for that, this form has been made anonymous. It will not, it will be anonymous in the sense that no names will be given, but students are only allowed to answer the form via their student email. So it has their first and last name listed on it in the case that something happens that to where it could endanger themselves or endanger someone else, we know who sent the form. And all of that will be sent this Friday. And as far as our, we'll be making flyers for students who may not read their emails daily. And we will try to get those done by Monday and get those approved by Mr. Waller and get those posted around the main points in the building and try to get as much student input as we can so that we know what we need to advocate for. And we will share those, we will share those results at a later time. Thank you.
That's great. Really looking forward to seeing the survey data. That's awesome. The board reports. Does anybody have a board report this evening? Okay, just start with that.
How did your first day go? I already heard from Sophia, so.
Yeah, it was good.
Okay. Okay.
It's downtime for board reports. Does anybody wish to have a board report this evening? There's a couple of things I want to, I guess, bring up. One is, as we talked last time about naming committee, and it's been a busy couple of weeks getting the school year started, so we haven't gotten the committee membership all done yet. But I expect that in a meeting in September, we'll have a committee put together and ready for board approval. Since it's a board committee, those meetings are going to have to be noticed, just like any other board committee. So they'll have to meet in public meetings. Another thing I want to clarify is I think there was some fusion.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have our other naming committees been open? I don't believe they have.
They have not, but we have made mistakes for a long time with regards to having open meetings.
I'm just asking because people have asked about that.
Yeah, no.
Other naming committees have not.
They had not, but it really wasn't until, because we haven't had a naming committee in a very long time.
Since we named Dr. Williams School, and those were not open meetings.
Yeah, those were not open meetings, and that was a mistake.
Okay, I'm just asking because it's been asked of me, so.
Yeah, I know. It's a board committee, so I think we have to do it that way.
It changes people who want to participate.
And I get that.
For significant people.
And I get that.
Passing the questions on that I'm getting from people.
Yeah, I understand, but it's state law, so. And then I want to make a clarification. I brought up Janice Mitchell. I guess when we were talking in general about naming committees, I think people conflated that statement with regards to a possible name for the sixth grade center, and that wasn't my intent at all. I was just saying that the reason naming committees are formed are typically one of two reasons. One is either we have a new thing that we need to name, or we wish to honor somebody. And I think, I just brought her name up because I think she's somebody we should honor in an appropriate fashion at some point in time. That's it, so. Sure.
Yeah, I understood that. You said that, and you meant that, Paul, so I didn't take it a different way.
There was confusion in the public, though, so I wanted to clarify that.
Regarding the committee, is it the board or the naming committee that will set the parameters on what the, not the rules, or what criteria you would use?
The board would charge the committee with a purpose.
Okay, so we'd be able to do that before the committee meets so that the committee won't work outside that criteria?
Yeah, typically you would do that when the committee is impaneled, and that would happen with a formal vote of the board. So we would say, these people are on the committee. This is their, this is their charge.
Okay, because I looked for some clarification. I looked up some other schools in Illinois that have had naming committees and what criteria there were, and I didn't find much except for in Chicago. There was something that might pertain to us, might not, because we're a much smaller community. I don't think we do things the way Chicago does, so we'll bring that up at a later time. The other question that I had was last week, we also got an email from the media wanting to, one of us to answer questions. And my response to them was that, Paul, you are the spokesman for it, and I know that day you didn't have time. So in that event.
With television stations, they often want you within the next three hours of receiving the email, and I was absolutely slammed at work.
Absolutely, and I understand that. So, I mean, is there any other direction as a board that we should go in the event that they called back a second time and say, well, we haven't been able to reach Paul?
Yeah, generally it would probably fall to Ben, then you'll go down to officers who would wish to do it if I'm unable to.
Okay, thank you. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Did I hear you're going to be on the radio tomorrow? Is that about the naming committee?
No, that was, that was scheduled.
I thought maybe that's what you're asking about.
No, that was scheduled a while ago. He, this is the second time I've done it. It's basically, Champagne did it a week ago. It's basically, welcome, it's a new school year. Let's bring in the school board president and have a chat. What?
I forgot the.
That's WDWS. It's pending for your thoughts. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead.
Talking about the media reminded me. I wanted to give a shout out to the News Gazette because they had a really nice, very sweet article about the UHS football team. And I just liked the way they did it, and I hope that everybody supports them this year.
That's awesome. Thank you. One last call. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have a set of action items for the consent agenda. Starting off with our minutes for the June 17 business meeting, the July 1 special meeting, the August 5 study session. 10:02 are June and July bills and checks. Ed Fund Bills for $3.4 million. Operation Main Fund Bills for $715,000 Bond and Interest Fund for a little over $1 million. Transportation Fund Bills for $476,000 Working Cash Bonds. Sorry, my lines are. Working Cash Bonds for $0.76 million. School Facility Auction Tax for $485,000. Tort for $216,000. Life Safety Levy for $9,000. Payroll for $6.6 million. And Urbana Adult Education for $174,000. In our packet was a long list of personal items, as typical for the start of the year, including some retirement announcements for this year and following years. And administrative personnel item. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Marabu?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We also have an individual action item for gifts. Smith Burger Company donated the UHS Winter Guard. Supported the UHS Winter Guard by sponsoring an entry, $100 to a regional competition. Adara Salon Champagne also supported a sponsorship, $200 to enter two regional competitions for the UHS Winter Guard. CU Church donated 50 backpacks with school supplies for students in the Urbana School District number 116. Is there a motion to receive this gift and send out appropriate thank yous?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is an executive meeting right after this. We close this meeting with no action, followed by the board. That's it for scheduled special meetings. Super Tennis Report.
So we had a wonderful first day of school. This is principal of our early childhood program. Is that Katie? Is Katie Madigan, right? I think so. Erica, thank you. Erica. Yes, 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 yes. Erica at Yankee Ridge. And we have some students walking in, so it was a great first day. So our high school students all started today. So yesterday, we just had freshmen. And all of the kindergartners come tomorrow, so be thinking about us when they're all in there together. Our back-to-school event on Friday was a very successful. I know we were a little worried about the heat and how warm it was, but people still showed up. We had, we had 30 community partners who signed up, but I don't think we had that many show up because of the heat. But we still had a large number of our community partners available to share resources with families. Quest provided the food. We had a refreshing Kona Ice for everyone. And then we transitioned to the football field, and we introduced the fall sports. And each of the teams said a little bit about their season and then invited the community out to support them this fall during their games. So thank you to all of our partners. I sent out an email, and everyone responded. And I think it was a really well-attended event, and we want to make it a yearly, something that we do every year. Our young people at the high school and middle school, we had a couple of middle school teams out there as well, really kicking off the year. It was just a lot of excitement, so thank you. I know we had a couple of board members in attendance, so I think Sheri and Lindsay. So thank you guys for coming out in the heat, but it was a great, great, great event. Sixth Grade Center ribbon cutting. So this is just a picture of, I know we had a very well-attended event on our Friday night ribbon cutting, which mostly consisted of students and their parents and their families, as well as some of our clubs and teams. So again, we had some of our contractors, the architects. We had some previous board members. So I think Mr. Demett is there, and Tori Exum came. So there was a lot of excitement in the building as people entered. We gave our teachers lots of grace because they'd only been in their classrooms for about two days. So we spent most of our time just kind of figuring out where everything was in the building and just kind of leaving their mark. The students were able to sign a huge banner that will hang up in the gym for the year for the inaugural sixth grade class. And one of our art teachers, Mr. Clevenger, had a huge activity in the elective hallway where the students were able to do an art project called Leaving Your Mark on the sixth grade center community. So as you can see in the little picture there, there were tons of videos and lots of excitement as we had that big, long, orange ribbon there. We called out some students' names, and, oh, remember Cheryl was there as well? And remember Baxley, because they also had students, and Lindsay and Jennifer, yep. And so it was nice to have their students, be able to come up with them. And we have a whole group of staff members on the other end there, too, ready to be part of that. So it was a great celebration. I should say, on Monday night, we had a community open house, and I think that Sheri attended the community open house, where we expected it to just be community members popping in, but we had a ton of families and students who came on Monday night who weren't available to come on Friday because they were out of town or traveling or whatever. So we were really happy to see so many students come with their parents to the community open house as well. Urbana Football. So Jennifer just mentioned, I was going to mention that really nice article, but we really want to encourage people to come out and support our football team. As you know, we have returned to football just here in the last two years, and we're trying to grow the program. And we have some really dedicated young men right now who are participating. John, I think you've got somebody who just popped in there. So our first home game is August 29 at 7, St. Teresa High School. This is our first Friday night under the lights, and we've dedicated it, we're designating it as Elementary Fun Night. And so at the Welcome Back event, we were passing out little tickets. If you, if an elementary student comes with a family member, they get in free, and then we're going to have some fun activities for the students. We really want to encourage our young people to get excited about Friday night under the lights. The more younger students who come, the more excited they will be to be, one day be Tigers and hopefully have their opportunity to either be in the band and be a marching tiger or be on the team. And so we're really trying to grow that excitement with our younger students as well. So we've listed the, all of the home games, and they all start at 7 or 7:30-ish. So come out and join us. And do you guys know which one of those is homecoming? Was it, is it the September 19 one? Okay, yes. So September 19 is homecoming. We'll have to add that before we share this out with the community and the public. King School was visited by a few of our Fighting Illini football players. They dropped off backpacks. That has become something that they have done at King for the last two years. And they shared school supplies. They talked with some of the fifth grade students. So they are really excited when the Illini football players. Anytime we have Fighting Illini people come to our schools, it just brings so much excitement in our youth. So we're really, we're thankful that they do this every year, and it brings a lot of joy to the King School community. I think that is it. Thank you, Lori. I'll put that on there, too.
All right. There is a listing of FOIA's in our published agenda that were processed by our FOIA team. I think that's it for tonight, so we're ready for, to close our meeting and have an exact session. So the chair would entertain a motion to, after a 10-minute recess, to reset the room. Enter closed session for the. enter closed session for the purpose of litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes, with no action taken by the board following the close of the exec session.
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Baxley?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes.
Member Cheryl?
Yes.
Member Hickson?
Yes.
Member Amarabu?
Yes.
All right, thank you. A little of a ten minute recess, and then we'll begin our closed session meeting.